Calling the Committee on Human Services, Thursday, February 11, 3:00 P.M. calendar. This meeting including the audio and video of remote participants is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. The Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the following agenda, which is the Thursday, 3:00 P.M., February 11, calendar for Human Services. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business Tuesday, February 16, at 3:00 P.M. and a public notice will be posted on the legislative website. However, because of the lateral deadline, that will, we need to make a decision today or it's dead for dual referral bills. So that's unlikely to happen. For the people participating remotely, all testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Because we have a number of bills today, you are going to be time limited to two minutes. If you can stand on your written testimony, please do so. We have read your written testimony. If there are temporary glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints, and we appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee has your written testimony. We are, I'll be reading a list of people who have submitted written testimony for each measure. Apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the Legislature's website, and you will find a link on the status page for the measure. Again, because of the lengthiness of this hearing, the two-minute time is going to be strictly followed, and you will be muted beyond two minutes. Okay, so, nothing further. And present in the conference room with me is Vice Chair Senator Les Ihara. Present on Zoom conference is Senator Laura Acasio. Okay, first up, SB 543, relating to human trafficking, establishes a statewide coordinator and program within the Department of Attorney General to provide services and assistance to sexually exploited children and victims of human trafficking. Requires the AG to submit reports. The Legislature requires the Children's Justice Program to coordinate investigation and case management of human trafficking cases, including cases involving a sexual exploitation of children. First up, we have on, that has registered to testify, judiciary in support. Is a judiciary present?
Present. Hi, I am, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jasmine Malmukhi. I am the Director of the Children's Justice Centers of Hawaii. The judiciary stands in strong support with its written testimony for Senate Bill 543 related to human trafficking, particularly since we're not asking for any funding appropriation. I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Human Services in support. Department of Human Services?
Aloha Chair, aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm Daisy Hartsfield. I am the Administrator for the Social Services Division, and the Department of Human Services will stand by its written testimony in support, and I will also be available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, next up, Attorney General in support. Anybody from the Attorney General's office?
Aloha Deputy Attorney General Fashad Talebi, and I'm the State Human Trafficking Coordinator. Just wanted to emphasize that this is a priority for General Connors and our department, and we believe that codifying the program is important for long-term sustained leadership in this area. And as judiciary mentioned, we're not asking for appropriations, but I think establishing the program through statute will help us obtain federal grants that'll lead to us building up the program and funding it. So respectfully ask the committee to pass this bill, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Office of the Public Defender in support. I see Darcy.
Aloha Chair San Buenaventura, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Public Defender Darcy Forester. The Office of the Public Defender stands on its written testimony in support of this bill. Mahalo.
Okay. Also testifying in support but not having registered for Zoom are Imoa Alliance, Catholic Charities of Hawaii, Parents and Children's Together, Sexual Abuse Treatment Center, and seven individuals. Anybody else that have registered late, that's on Zoom, that wants to testify on SB 543? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Thank you very much. SB 577, relating to family court, amends provisions relating to criteria and procedures in family court determinations regarding custody and visitation rights. Clarifies that a parent's felony conviction for violent or sexual offense in which the victim was a minor or requirement to register as a sex offender raises a rebuttable presumption that custody or visitation by that parent is not in the best interest of the child requires courts to consider registration as a sex offender, a presumption of risk that affects the burden of producing evidence requires courts to state reasons for findings in writing or on the record, including specific findings that there is no risk to the child's health, safety, and welfare. First up, judiciary comments. Okay. Oh, no one having registered to testify for this measure. The list of testifiers that provide written testimony is, other than the judiciary, is Domestic Violence Action Center in support, Hawaii Psychological Association in support, and one individual, Eileen Garth, in support. Anybody else wishing to testify that's on Zoom on SB 577? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, moving on. SB 821, relating to children, emancipation of minors, allows a minor who has reached the age of 16 to petition the family court for emancipation and directs the court regarding investigation of the petition, appointment of legal counsel, and a guardian aludin for the petitioner, and the findings necessary to grant the petition. Specifies the rights gained by the minor upon emancipation and authorizes the court to require the minor's parents or legal guardians to pay for any services ordered by the court. Requires emancipation proceedings to be stayed until final disposition of the child protective case, if any, under 587A. Okay, first up, Hawaii Youth Services Network in support. I see Judith Clark.
Aloha Chair and members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. We are in support of this bill. We feel that it provides adequate safeguards to ensure that a minor seeking to emancipate possesses the necessary knowledge and skills to take on adult responsibilities, is financially able to support him or herself, understands and accepts the responsibilities that he or she is taking on, is not seeking emancipation due to duress or coercion by a parent or guardian. There have been cases elsewhere where parents have attempted to evade financial responsibility for their children by forcing them into emancipation. And it ensures that the young person can continue to receive educational and other services intended and needed by adolescence. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much, Judith. Okay, no one else having registered to testify via Zoom. Those who have submitted written testimony are Department of Human Services with comments and four other individuals in support. Anybody else registering for Zoom wishing to testify on SB 821? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Judith. Okay, moving on. SB 822, Child Welfare Child Protective Act, defines and recognizes rights and trust for children within the Child Protective Act, requires family court to appoint guardian aludin in custody cases, provides that when a child is subject to harm or imminent harm has been harmed or may suffer probable harm, is sufficient for police officers to take child into protective custody without court order for Department of Human Services to assume temporary foster custody of child and for Department of Human Services to conduct an investigation. First up, judiciary comments.
This is Judge Jesse. Good afternoon, Senator San Buenaventura and the committee. We stand on our testimony as submitted, and we're here available if there's any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Catherine Zian in support.
Yes, Senator, I stand on my family's testimony in support. I represent them. We are currently struggling through the family court system and have noticed that children are exempt from, in practice, not on its face, but in practice, exempt from their constitutional rights for due process and freedom of speech. I am available for questions if needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, no one else having registered to testify on SB 822. Those submitting written testimony are Attorney General with comments, Department of Human Services with comments, Hawaii Family Advocacy Team in opposition, three other individuals and four other individuals in support, and one individual submitting comments. Anybody else wishing to testify that's on Zoom on SB 822?
Aloha Chair, this is Daisy Hartsfield on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We're going to stand by our testimony, but I did want the committee to know that I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on SB 822? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, I see Senator Acasio, go ahead.
Um, Chair, the guardian aludins are generally expensive, and I'm wondering if, for example, if a family or a couple cannot afford one for their children or their child, will then the state, it seems like the state should provide one. Is that?
Okay, so we need to ask somebody who is on the witness. Is a judiciary present able to answer Senator Acasio's question? Does a judiciary provide a guardian aludin?
Yes, Chair, this is Judge Jesse Hall again. With regards to custody cases, the judiciary does not have the financial ability to pay for a guardian aludin in every case, but we do provide guardian aludins in every case in our 587 child welfare cases.
Okay, so Sandra Acasio, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. Thank you very much. SB 838, relating to services for Kupuna, allows the Executive Office of Aging to relax the 30-hour employment requirement for qualified caregivers under the Kupuna Caregivers Program during a state-declared state of emergency. Adds the option of Kupuna caregiver-directed services to the Kupuna Caregivers Program, includes assisting the care recipient and caregiver with enrollment process as a duty of a coach, allows funds under the Kupuna Caregivers Program to be issued to the care recipient's financial management service provider. Okay, first up, Office of Aging in support. Carolyn.
Yes, good afternoon Chair San Buenaventura, Vice Chair Ihara, members of the committee. This is Carolyn Tadira, Director of the Executive Office on Aging. We stand in strong support of Senate Bill 838 as it relates to services for Kupuna. And this bill offers, again, flexibility to improve the services and supports for caregivers by adding a model of participant-directed services. We do respectfully request an amendment that is not in our written testimony, and that is to the caregivers working 30 hours or more a week. This is on Page 6, line 5 through 7, which reads, "The Executive Office on Aging may reduce the required hours or eliminate this requirement during the emergency period." We are recommending that we remove the words "eliminate this requirement" as noted on line 7. The purpose of this amendment is that we retain the original intent of the law, which is to support our working caregivers. I'm available for questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, that is on Page 6, line 7.
Right.
And that's "or eliminate this requirement." So just say "may reduce the required hours during the emergency period." Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Office of Aging. Next up, again, Office of Aging, Christina Valenzuela. Is she present?
Good afternoon, Chair. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you turn on the video?
I apologize, but my video is not working. I'm actually just here available to support our director, and if there's any questions folks may have, I'm available for comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Department of Human Services in support. Daisy, are you still present? There you are.
Aloha Chair, I'm still present, and we stand by our testimony, and we're available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, AARP in support. Okay, nobody?
Good afternoon Chair, this is Audrey Sivan Nakagawa, Advocacy Director for AARP Hawaii, and we stand on our testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. No one else having registered for this bill to testify. Those who have submitted written testimony are Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition in support, Pabaya Policy Advisory Board for Elder Affairs in support, AARP in support, Alzheimer's Association in support, Faith Action for Community Equity in support, and 19 individuals in support, no one in opposition. Members, any questions? Okay, so I have a question. Oh, and Senator Missalucha is also present. I have a question for Carolyn. Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay, so you know your bill failed in the House, right? Do you think that your amendment is going to pass the House?
I hope so. The intent is really to ensure that we support those working caregivers as the original intent of the law was written back in 2017, and we have ways to leverage other federal and state fundings to support the non-working caregivers. So we'll look into that and ensure that this bill will support working caregivers.
Okay, so here's the, I spoke to Chair Yama and what his concerns were, and it's basically similar to mine, which is we have limited funds in the Kupuna Caregivers Program. Do you know how much is left? Because it's like one-time funding. It's not like early allotment.
Correct. Because of the downturn during the pandemic, a lot of daycares were closed, so we have some savings about, I roughly think about $500,000. We're also going to support it with some stimulus monies that we receive through the Administration for Community Living, CARES Act funds that support working caregivers also. So we're hoping to utilize and leverage various funding resources to support the working caregivers. So that's why there's not an ask for funds, just a change in some language in this bill.
Okay, so the concern is by expanding the uses of the fund, by allowing the relaxing of the 30 hours, that means more people will qualify, which then depletes the fund further, and there's unlikely to be more infusion. So at a time when caregivers are starting to go back to work, there won't be any help for them. Do you foresee any, not counting the state, because the state basically said we're not going to put in any more money. Do you expect to see any other infusion if we allowed for this to pass?
I was going to look again, like I said, at leveraging both our federal and our state funds and support with additional Kupuna care funds if needed. I would like to add, though, that the providers' ability to continue to serve at the level they were has been restricted due to social distancing. So by adding in the participant-directed model, we can support people in different ways. They don't have to go to a traditional service provider. That was the intent of the changes.
Okay. I have no further questions. Do any other committee members have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. SB 885, relating to Child Protective Act, requires a family court to appoint counsel to indigent parents in foster care cases and make every effort to do so at the first hearing attended by the parent. Only one person registered to testify, and that is Department of Human Services with comments. I see Daisy.
Aloha Chair, Daisy Hartsfield again, and the department stands by its written testimony, and I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, nobody else having registered to testify. Those providing written testimony are judiciary with comments, attorney general with comments, and three individuals in support. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify on SB 885? Okay, seeing none. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we're moving on. SB 1041, crimes, sex trafficking, prostitution-related offenses. Create a separate offense for those who provide anything of value to engage in sexual conduct with another. Add sex trafficking to offenses that can be prosecuted at any time. Makes a person strictly liable for sex trafficking of a minor in terms of the victim's age. Changes the name of the crime of solicitation of a minor for prostitution to commercial sexual exploitation of a minor while closing loopholes in the law that allows offenders to escape liability and increases the grade of offense to a class B felony. Adds anything of value to reflect the reality of non-monetary compensation used in commercial sexual exploitation. Okay, first up, Attorney General in support. Attorney General, I see you there. Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy Attorney General Fashad Talebi and the State Human Trafficking Coordinator. I know this is a comprehensive and technical bill, but two things I just wanted to point or highlight for the committee, Section 6 and Section 9, and they address a couple problematic legal issues that create unintended consequences. And so I think these amendments in particular are important. I know that committees and the legislature see several trafficking-related bills, but the intent of this is to provide one comprehensive bill that addresses a lot of the issues that the other ones address and more. So we respectfully ask the committee to pass this bill, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Office of the Public Defender in opposition. Darcy.
Aloha, Chair San Buenaventura and members of the committee. The Office of the Public Defender opposes this measure for several reasons as discussed in our written testimony. I'd like to just highlight that we strongly oppose strict liability as to the state of mind and attendant circumstances that a victim was a minor. Subjecting a person to a class A felony with a punishment of a 20-year prison term should require some actual intent, knowledge, or recklessness as to the age of the person who purports to be an adult and who may even provide documentation like a fake ID to support their status as an adult when engaging in a transaction for sex. In addition, we have very serious concerns about the broad language, quote, "any item of value," unquote, without some qualification that the intent is to participate in a business transaction for sex as opposed to behavior that would be considered flirting, courting, or dating in the modern context. We live in a world where hookup culture is a thing. Dating apps bring people together for sexual encounters, and we should not criminalize a consensual sexual encounter because there was an agreement to have sex after a meal or a beverage is purchased as part of an event. So these are our concerns. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Prosecuting Attorney in support, Honolulu, I see Tricia. Tricia Nakamatsu, your turn.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Nakamatsu, on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney, we are in support of the measure. It is quite comprehensive, there are a number of moving parts, but we support everything. Essentially, we're available for questions if any.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, Maui Police Department in support. Oh, I'm sorry. Next up, Honolulu Police Department in support.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Major Philip Johnson, stand on our written in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up, Maui County Prosecuting Attorney. Okay, no one else having registered to testify by Zoom. Those submitting written testimony are Maui County Prosecuting Attorney in support and four individuals in support. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify on SB 1041? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Okay, I have a question. Attorney General, are you still there? Fashad?
Yes, I am, Chair.
Okay, is this your bill?
Yes.
Okay, so I have major concerns, not only with Section 6 and 9, and on pages, I had a whole bunch of tabs which my clerk removed, but one of my major concerns is on section, is on page 8, where basically you made prostitution illegal again when our sex trafficking law passed a couple of years ago, basically changed the view and changed the view of using prostitute as sex trafficking victims. But by your removing, have you looked at the changes? I mean, obviously, you're looking at the current sex trafficking law, but have you looked at the reasons behind our change a couple of years ago from prostitution to sex trafficking, changing the viewpoint of prostitutes as criminals and instead be victims of sex trafficking?
Yes, Chair, which, which section are you on? Are you?
I'm looking at page 8.
1212, 1202?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Section 5. You guys took out everything, all of the delineations. You removed it, you removed the acting other than as a prostitute or patron of prostitute act, and you, basically, you made prostitution back into, you're making the sex trafficking law back into the prostitution statute that we changed two years ago, is what my concern is.
I don't, I don't read it as that. I think the change there was eliminating the term prostitute.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe in terms of, like we were saying, referencing an individual as a prostitute rather than potentially as someone who's being sexually exploited or engaged in prostitution.
Okay, so have you looked at SB 48 that we had passed earlier?
Yes.
Okay. I think you guys testified in support of that, right?
With comments.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to ask questions? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. SB 1128, relating to Office of Youth Services, permits individual vocational programs within the purview of the Office of Youth Services to engage in commercial enterprises, including the sale of goods and services for self-sustaining the sale of goods and services for self-sustaining purposes for young adults only, establishes the Office of Youth Services Revolving Fund. First up, Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support.
Aloha, Chair and members. This is Kamala Montanaro for Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Will stand on our testimony in strong support of this measure, which would allow the Kailua Center to create a self-sustaining Pu'ou'onoa and serve OIS's vision to end Kiki incarceration in Hawaii. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Department of Human Services in support. Okay, nobody... Mark Patterson isn't available. Kauai Loa, Youth and Family Wellness. Oh, it's Mark Patterson, your turn.
Hi, I'm representing the Office of Youth Service, not so much the Department of Human Services, but aloha, everyone, Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for this afternoon hearing. I'm just Mark Patterson, Administrator of Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center. Will stand on our written testimony, and I'll be standing by for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Community Alliance on Prisons in support. I see Kat Brady. You need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Aloha, Chair, and aloha, Senator Missalucha. Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons in really strong support of this bill. This is not just about Kauai Loa. This is about youth. This is about our kids and actually helping them develop the skills through commercial entrepreneurship, but it also leads to social entrepreneurship, which is so awesome. We definitely want our kids to be the next leaders. There's been lots of research about how great programs like this are because they really address...
Okay.
...the future, help the youth reach their highest and best potential. Big support.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Karen Shiroda, Carrie Shiroda in support. Is she there? Okay, no one else having registered for Zoom.
I have a question, Chair.
Okay, let me read out the witnesses, and then we'll call you. Okay. Those submitting written testimonies, Office of Youth Services in support. Kupuna for the Mo'opuna and support 38 individuals and support nobody in opposition. Questions? Senator Missalucha has a question.
Just to clarify, I'm just not sure whether, is this an Office of Hawaiian Affairs bill?
No, this is an Office of Youth Services bill.
Is there anybody from Office of Youth Services?
Mark Patterson is there.
Okay, Mark, can I just ask a clarificatory question? So in establishing this Youth Services Revolving Fund, it will be a self-sustaining fund from the looks of it, right? Because as you engage in commercial enterprises, you're not looking for some seed monies at the onset. Oh, you have to unmute yourself. Just to clarify.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Yes, I'm sorry, Senator. I gotta remember the question.
Missalucha.
Yeah, Missalucha. So would you like me to reiterate the question?
Please, please.
Yes, so one of the things that the elements in this bill is establishing the Office of Youth Services Revolving Fund, and I really appreciate the intent, particularly the commercial enterprises that are possibilities. So my clarificatory question is, so you envision this revolving fund to be self-sustaining? So the... Or are we expecting some root, I mean, some seed monies at the onset?
At this particular time, the one area that we, the Office of Youth Service, is capable of creating and developing a commercial enterprise is on the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center campus. Written into the budget of the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center, which was former Hawaii Youth Correctional Facility, is already budgeted and appropriated money to manage livestock and their farm. So we already have livestock and crops in the ground as we speak. So it would just be the establishment of the revolving fund and us establishing a means for which to sell our beef and our produce in an open market.
So it's a reallocation, creating a new fund for the existing activities that you already are doing? Is that correct?
Yes, so we can manage and maintain what we're hoping for in receiving, in creating the revolving fund and receiving the profits from the sale of produce and beef, is the ability to pay a workforce that are currently residing on our property in terms of the homeless shelter and our vocational programs. These are youth and young adults that are just as involved, that are with us, so that we may help them and continue to make them productive citizens in a vocational program.
Like I said, thank you, Doc. Very admirable, and I appreciate the intent. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a couple questions, Mark. This bill has come in front of me back when I was in house, and at that time, the advocate was Merton Chenin, and I pass it. But the big questions are always, how much money do you expect to be in the revolving fund? And how many children are involved in this?
Those are good questions, Senator. I have not really looked at how much money it's going to be in the particular fund at this time, as that will be determined about how fast and how quick we can develop the process by which we will move beef and our produce to the open market upon that deposit when we get to understand and learn how that fund will be built. The population that will benefit is currently at about, you know, with the incarcerated population, the homeless population, and potential populations from Ulamana School and our vocational programs, we're talking about 150 potential people to work the farm. Yeah, and that's not counting programs in the community that have been working on the farm already. So it's a high number of children that will be affected by this, and as we get the authorization to create the revolving fund, we will work harder to develop how the vocational program will look.
Okay, and it is an admirable program, but how many are incarcerated children? Because I remember we are moving away from incarcerating children, right? We are moving towards other forms of punishment.
You know, that's a good question, too, Senator. So from a systemic look at all of the Office of Youth Service responsibility, we have 22 children today, I'm sorry, 20 children today incarcerated in the Hawaii Youth Correctional Facility, 18 boys and two girls. We're probably closer at ending the girls' incarceration than we are at boys at this particular time. The majority of the population are here because the judiciary felt they didn't know what else to do. Yes, and some of them are here for their own safety, not so much public safety. So it's really creating the opportunities with our service providers and our communities to look at creative ways for alternatives to the incarceration for those who need their own safety and not public safety. What's interesting to note as well is that the population, current population, half of these children are from the neighbor islands. Yeah, what we want to do is to continue to work with the three counties, Kauai, Maui, and Hawaii, and their service providers, to see how we can keep those children at home on their islands rather than sending them to Oahu. And with this bill being passed, it would create opportunities for state agencies, community organizations, to work together to create opportunities for, to create programs of residential nature so that we can keep these children on their islands.
Okay, so Mark, and I'm going to tell you the same thing I told Merton, your predecessor, and he retired before it actually got passed. You have no problems with me. I mean, I like the concept. The biggest problems you're going to have are with the money committees, right? Because with the low amount of incarcerated and the move towards not incarcerating children, the cost they see of maintaining this revolving fund exceeds the benefits. So until you're able to... You don't have to do... Like I said, I love the concept. That's what I told Merton, too. I love the concept. So I'm just...
Let me...
And you will pass my committee. The only question is whether or not you're going to be able to convince the money committees that it is worthwhile, okay? And one of the things I have suggested and I'm requesting that you consider is, in the event it fails, and I suspect it will, you folks think about another way. And one possibility was, I suggested you folks partnering with PSD, somehow having like a sub-revolving fund with public safety using their own, you know, their own prison industry fund. Okay, maybe by having...
I just want...
Yeah?
I just wanted to clarify, Senator, the incarcerated population is a small percentage of what this bill represents.
Yeah.
This bill represents all the responsibilities of the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center, which is multiple high-risk youth populations in addition to the incarcerated. So we're talking about high-risk kids from the Department of Education. We're talking about victims of sex trafficking. We're talking about homeless young adults. Those are all on our property right now. So it's in addition to the incarcerated population that this...
Mark, you don't need to talk me into it. You gotta go talk the other people into it, is all I'm trying to say, Mark, okay? And it's a question...
Thank you, Senator.
It's a question of numbers, really. That's what it boils down to. So, okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you. SB 1129, reports of child abuse. Adds immunity from civil and criminal liability for individuals who provide information or assistance in the child abuse investigation. For Department of Human Services, Daisy Hartsfield in support.
That's correct, Chair, and the department is going to stand by its written testimony, and I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. And three other individuals, no one else having registered to testify on SB 1129. Three other individuals providing written testimony. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1129? Okay, seeing none. Okay, questions? Okay, Senator Casio.
Chair, I suppose as we go to Department of Human Services, being that they're here, just if you know, because you may not be, how often, I know pediatricians were used in the example of a lot of the testimony, but how often do we know how often pediatricians were consulted or are consulted in, for abuse cases and then actually sued? Seems like the testimony says it happened. Do we have any sense of the reality of that?
This is based on national information in Hawaii. I don't have any data to validate whether or not it has occurred in Hawaii, but I just wanted to reiterate that the reason why we're moving forward with this bill is to be aligned with federal statute and also to make sure that we continue to receive federal funds that are, that we can only get if we pass this statute. And I also just wanted to mention that we believe this statute will encourage reporting of cases of child abuse and neglect, and we don't believe that it extends to anyone acting in bad faith. So I can get those numbers to you if they exist, but that's the basis behind this bill. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else with questions? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none, moving on. SB 1129, or was that it? That was it, SB 1129, excuse me. Next up, SB 1134, relating to Adult Protective Services. Broadens the Department of Human Services employees' right of entry into vulnerable adults premises from physical abuse to abuses as defined in HRS Section 346-222. First up, Department of Human Services in support. Daisy, you're on.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair and committee members. The department stands on its written testimony, and I'm also here to answer any questions.
Okay, next up, Executive Office of Aging in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. This is Christina Valenzuela with the Executive Office on Aging. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Maui County. No one else having registered for SB 1134. Written testimony provided by Maui County Department of Prosecuting Attorney in support. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify on SB 1134? Seeing none, members, questions? They see none, moving on. SB 1137, relating to Child, Spouse and Child Abuse Special Fund. Amends the Spouse and Child Abuse Special Fund to allow up to $5 million of federal reimbursements received from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and families in the year following the fiscal year in which the Family First Prevention Services Fund and the Title IV E funds were expended to be deposited and retained. Okay, first up, Department of Human Services in support. Daisy?
Aloha, Chair and committee members. It's Daisy Hartsfield on behalf of the Department of Human Services. We stand by our written testimony in strong support. Oh, and I'm available for questions if there are any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Nobody else having registered to testify. Three other, Department Domestic Violence Action Center and two other individuals have provided written testimony. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1137? Okay, seeing none. Questions, members? Okay, I have a question. Daisy?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, you know probably what my question's going to be. If we pass this, how soon can we get our Family First Prevention Services Act program up and running?
We are still shooting for the October date. I can give you an update on what the status is in regards to the plan. We just received notification from the administrative, administration of children and families that they are in the process of reviewing our plan for approval. They did ask for in addition on three weeks to complete the review, which we agreed to. So it looks like we're right where we need to be, so...
Okay, so the ball is on their court? It's on the defense court? Okay, terrific.
Yes, Chair.
Terrific, I'm glad it's up and running. I mean, I'm glad we're finally moving towards that.
We're moving forward, yes, yes, Chair.
Appreciate it, Daisy. Okay, any other questions, members? Okay, seeing none. SB 1142, Executive Office of Aging. Kupuna Care, Kupuna Caregivers. Adds Kupuna Caregiver Directed Services to Kupuna Caregivers Program. Includes financial management service provided and additional duties for the coach. Allows for qualified caregivers to work less than 30 hours a week or employed during a declared state of emergency. Okay, first up, Executive Office of Aging in support.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we're in support of this administrative bill that relates to Kupuna Services. Like Senate Bill 838, Senate Bill 1142 recommends those changes have flexibility to the Kupuna Caregiver Program. Since this bill was written, EOA does recommend one amendment as it relates to the unemployed caregiver. On page nine, line nine and 10, EOA proposes to delete or is unemployed. Same as the other bill, this is to reclaim the original intent of the law, which is to support working caregivers. And I would just like to clarify that you were correct, the House did not pass a companion to Senate Bill 838, which was House Bill 491, but that they did move forward the administrative bill, which is House Bill 988, and is going to be heard tomorrow in secrecy. And I'm here for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, again, Office of Aging in support. Christina Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted just to add one slight amendment to what Carolyn had proposed. We wanted to also delete on page two or be unemployed. So there would be two amendments, on page two or be unemployed, and then also on page nine, line nine and 10, or it is unemployed. And I apologize, on page two... And I apologize, on page two, it's line 18. Just wanted to add those amendments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, no one else having registered to testify. Those providing written support is Pabeya in support AARP and support Adult Day Care Centers, Abai, and Support Alzheimer's Association and support Faith Action for Community, Faith Action for Community Equity and Support, and Thirting Individuals in support. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify on SB 1142? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. SB 1132, Medicaid Sustainability Program. Judy Moore, okay, let's read it. Establishes the Medicaid Sustainability Program for two years appropriate funds of the Medicaid Sustainability Program Special Fund for fiscal years 2021 to 2022 and 2022 to 2023. First up, Judy Moore Peterson, Department of Human Services. Oh, you're present.
Hi, hello.
Hello.
Hi, hello, thank you for this opportunity to testify in support. We stand on our written testimony, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Hawaii Primary Care Association. Okay, no one else having registered to testify. Those providing written testimony are Hawaii Primary Care Association in support. HMSA would comment. Ohana Health Plan in support. Okay. Anybody else wishing to testify on our last measure for today, SB 1132?
Nick Moore.
Shoot, sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, questions, members? Seeing none. I have a question. Judy? Okay, so you know the House has problems with your Medicaid Sustainability Program bill?
Yeah, I've heard that, yes.
Okay, and I don't think they passed the House companion, did they?
They do not, they have not brought it up yet.
Okay, so this is basically, so with your amendment, do you think that will satisfy Chair Yamanis' concerns?
I hope so.
Okay. So basically, you have heard of Chair Yamanis' concerns, right? It adds a fee to the insurers, which will likely be passed on to the rest of us, and...
Right.
And you guys have shown us that with both the, with both the Nursing Facility Sustainability Program and the Hospital Sustainability Program that we passed earlier, like two days ago, that you folks are going to be making money. So why do we need this?
Thank you for that, thank you for that question. We are, we are currently, in our budget, we are projecting shortfalls in our Medicaid budget of approximately $12 million in this upcoming fiscal year, and then more than $30 million in the following fiscal year. And even with the passage of the Hospital Sustainability as well as the Nursing Facility Sustainability Bills, they will not address those, incomplete, they will not address those budget shortfalls. So without this, we would have to take actions to make reductions in our program or request additional general funds in order to cover our budget shortfall. In large part, we have our budget shortfall because we've experienced over 20% growth in the number of people that we're covering. And while we currently have some enhanced federal match to help us cover, that enhanced federal match ends at the end of the public health emergency. So consequently, with the increased Medicaid enrollment, and those individuals are not necessarily going to be dropping off the minute the public health emergency ends, we will face a shortfall within our budget. So we've looked for ways that are the least sort of damaging to be able to find ways to support our Medicaid program without having to take provider rate cuts, benefit cuts, or cuts to the people that we're serving, which we think is not a good thing to happen during the middle of a pandemic. I would also note that the way in which we would be structuring the Medicaid health insurer's fee would be extremely minimal impact on the private health insurance marketplace. The primary payers of the health insurance fee would be those health insurers that we contract with. And similar to how it is that we are able to get money back to the hospitals and the nursing facilities that pay the sustainability fees, we would be doing the same thing with the health insurers paying this fee. So it has a minimal impact on the general place, and it supports the program.
Okay, so Senator Miss Alucha has a question.
Hi, Judy. So I'm new to this issue, so help me get a fair understanding. If the House doesn't, or did not pass the bill, and we, just as an example, if we do not pass this bill, what would happen?
What would happen is that we, the Medicaid program, we would then begin to look for ways to cut our program, to cut our benefits for our Medicaid population, to cut our provider rates. So we would look at what we pay for our physicians, our durable medical equipment, prescription. I mean, we would look at our rates, and then we would look at ways that we could cut those. We would look at if there are particular benefits and services that we're providing today that we would either restrict, limit, or eliminate. And then last, well, not possible today, but the least, it's an option that we don't like to take, we would have to make restrictions on the people that we served, which, of course, we don't want to do that because during a pandemic, Medicaid as a safety net for health insurance is needed.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
You're on.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Research for decision-making. Recalling the February 11th Thursday calendar, 3:00 p.m. calendar for Department, I mean Committee on Human Services for Decision-Making. For SB 543, Chair's recommendation is to pass with tech amendments. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Human Service Committee members, we're voting on the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 543 with amendments. Chair San Berna Ventura?
Aye.
Aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Casio?
Aye.
Senator Miss Alucha?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
The recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. For SB 577, Chair's recommendation is to pass judiciary's amendment. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Okay, we're voting, I'm going to, with all members present, we're voting on Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 577 with amendments. Any reservations or objections to the recommendation? The recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you. For SB 821, Chair's recommendation is to pass with a DHS amendment as SB 1. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Any recommendations, objections to the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 821?
No vote for Senator, no vote for Senator Favella.
Any other objections or reservations? Otherwise, we'll cast a yes vote for the other members present. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, SB 822, Chair's recommendation is to defer this. To defer this, there are just too many problems with it at this time. We need to work on it some more for the various written testimony. Okay, SB 838, Chair's recommendation is to accept the Executive Office of Aging amendment. Remove the phrase "or is unemployed" on page nine on lines nine and 10. Defect date this so that we can keep the conversation going. And otherwise, no other changes. Any questions, any comments? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
For the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 838 with amendments, any objections or reservations? The recommendation is adopted.
Okay, for SB 885, Chair's recommendation is to accept the Attorney General's opinion and defer this indefinitely. So for SB 1041, we passed SB 48 SD 1 earlier, and I am going to rely on that because SB 1041 as written has many changes. Request that the Attorney General redraft with the comments I have made. Otherwise, I'm going to defer in lieu of SB 48 SD 1. Okay, as far as SB 1128?
So you're deferring Senate Bill 1041, okay?
Yes, deferring it indefinitely. Okay, for SB 1128, Chair's recommendation is to pass with tech amendments and add a defect date to keep the conversation going, and hopefully, they can fix it to pass the next committee. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
For the Human Service Committee members, any reservation, objections to the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1128 with amendments? Hearing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, so for SB 1129, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with tech amendments. It's needed to keep federal funding going. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
For the Chair's recommendations on to pass Senate Bill 1129 with amendments, any reservations or objections?
Reservations.
Reservations for Senator Casio? Any other reservations or objections? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, for SB 1134, seeing no opposition. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with tech amendments. Any comments, questions? Vice Chair for the vote.
We're voting on the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1134 with amendments. Any reservations or objections to the Chair's recommendation? Otherwise, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so for SB 1137, Chair's recommendation is to pass with tech amendments and add an effective upon approval date. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
On the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1137 with amendments, any reservations or objections? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. So for SB 1142, Chair's recommendation is to submit an SD 1 with the amendments testified to by Office of Aging, which basically deletes on page two, line 18, be unemployed, and also accept the written correction of "or is unemployed" deletion on page nine on lines nine and 10. We're going to add a defect date to keep the conversation going, and hopefully, they can get the succeeding chairs to agree on their bill. Otherwise, pass with amendments. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
We're voting on the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1142 with amendments. Any reservations or objections to the recommendation? The recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. As far as 1132, Chair's recommendation is to remove the not-for-profit health plans from the health insurer's definition on page four. Adopt the DHS amendment. Add a defect date to continue the conversation. But otherwise, no, and otherwise, add, accept the DHS further amendments on the written testimony. Otherwise, no other amendments. Any comments, questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
On the Chair's recommendation to pass Senate Bill 1132 with amendments, any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.